I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Monday, March 17th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
There are no additions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any input from the audience on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening contains our minutes from our February 25th, 2025 regular meeting. I did have one addition to the minutes. I did ask Liz to indicate the commissioners that were absent from the meeting in the minutes, so she has made that correction to indicate that Commissioner Bugai was absent that evening. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Bugai. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. We have no old business this evening, so we'll move on to our public hearing section. The first item on our public hearing section this evening is a request by Independent School District 196 for a site plan and building design review for a proposed expansion and renovation to the existing Rosemont High School. And we'll turn it over to Julia.
All right. All right, so a little bit of an overview of the request today. So the applicant is requesting a site plan and building design review to renovate and expand the existing Rosemont High School. So the proposed project will include adding a new activity center, an expansion of the existing building that includes a three-story classroom addition for 300-student additional capacity. This project will also include a new parking lot area in front of the proposed activity center and renovations to the existing building that include improving the food service experience and enhancing accessibility to the library. As part of the school district referendum that passed in 2023, this included adding improvements and expansions onto these existing schools in the district, which included the Rosemont High School. So a little bit overview of the site locations. So the Rosemont High School is located west of South Robert Trail or Highway 3, and then also located east of Carols Woods Park. It is on about 70 acres of land in a zone public-institutional. So currently, the city does have one large school campus, which incorporates the high school, also the elementary school and middle school just directly south. And all of this has been present on-site since the '60s. Obviously, the planning commission is aware that a new elementary school has been approved over off of Bon Air, and then also a new Rosemont Middle School off of County Road 42 and Biscayne. But these additions will be on to the existing high school. So a little overview of the site plan. So again, the proposed additions that are planned for this site is a new activity center, which you can kind of see in the site plan, that is located directly east of the existing building, and will have access to the existing school from a skyway, a new parking lot area directly south of the proposed activity center, which will include 60 stalls, which you can see in the site plan as well, a three-story classroom additions that extends off of the library, which is directly northwest off of the existing school, and then also expanded circulation space around the existing courtyards in the school, which you can see those three areas that these arrows are pointing to, and then improvements to the student center and kitchen area, and then also improvements to accessibility in the library. These additions are subject to the minimum lot requirements, setbacks in site and building design standards of the public institutional zoning district, and they do meet all the setback requirements and additional requirements of the PI zoning district. So a little overview of the access and parking on-site. So this main access to Rosemont High School comes from 142nd Street West, which extends west off of South Robert Trail. There is a secondary access as well to the site from Chili Avenue, which extends south from the site to adjacent residential neighborhoods, and then connects with 145th Street West. The main parking lot areas on the site are located south of the bus and parent pickup drop-off areas, which is south of the entrance into the high school, and then access to those areas come from Chili Avenue, and then also from 142nd Street West. Starting in the summer of 2025, MINDOT will be constructing a roundabout at the intersection of South Robert Trail and 142nd Street West, which will also include realignment of bike and pedestrian crosswalk, access to the roundabout. This work should take place over the summer and is planned to be finished in the fall. For parking, so the high school currently has a total of 948 stalls. The existing parking stall count exceeds the minimum requirement for off-street parking standards in the PI zoning district for secondary schools. So the requirement for off-street parking for secondary schools is one stall per 20 students. Currently, there are 81 classrooms in the school and a total of 2,114 students that attend, so that would even out to about 187 stalls that are required on-site, which the 948 does exceed that 187 requirement. The proposed additions and expansions to the high school will require an additional 27 parking stalls to be incorporated on-site, and the proposed new lot adds an additional 60, which brings the total parking count to 1,008 stalls, which again is over that minimum requirement, which you can kind of see broken down in these tables at the bottom of the screen. So a little overview of the landscaping. So the landscape plan that is provided contains a total of 1,542 trees throughout the high school site. The minimum requirement for the site is 1,510 trees, so the total trees on-site is meeting that minimum requirement. The submitted landscape plan also shows the breakdown of replacement tree calculations, so a total of 26 trees needs to be removed from the site to allow for the construction of the additions and expansions. A total of 134 trees is planned to be replaced on-site, which meets that minimum requirement for tree replacement. The landscaping is planned to be a variety of trees and shrubs throughout the perimeter of the new additions, and then also integrated around the new stormwater management systems and the new parking lot as well, which you can see a few of those landscape plans at the top of the screen as well. You can see on the right-hand side that is a new activity center and parking lot area, and some of the new trees planted around that area. And then on the left-hand side, you can see the trees in the back area where the library and the new classroom additions will be located. So the site lighting, so the applicant did submit a site lighting exhibit of the new parking lot area, and it does demonstrate compliance with the city's light intensity standards. So some of the new LED lighting that is planned around the perimeter of the new parking lot area and along the exterior of the building additions. The pole lighting plan will be about 25 feet tall, which meets the height requirement, and then also includes motion sensors, which dims down the lighting to 15% when there is no movement or occupants are detected. There's also exterior doors at the new activity center will have either adjacent building-mounted or canopy-mounted lighting. And then overview of the architectural elevations. So the building elevation plans that were submitted by the app can show materials that are complementary to the existing high school building. So the proposed activity center is shown to be a mixture of architectural precast, concrete, and then brick and metal panels. And then the sky that will connect to the existing school will also have a mixture of a combination of glass and metal panels. And the new classroom addition will consist mostly of brick to be cohesive with that northern exterior of the existing building. And the colors and patterns that are proposed are supposed to be cohesive with the existing building that is currently there. Then go through a couple of 3D renderings and also the proposed floor plans that are shown to be on the site. So you can see on the right-hand side that skyway system that will add to the new activity center, which has multiple gym spaces and then other additions within the activity center. And then you can see the three courtyards in the middle of the existing school. There will be additions on to those to add for more capacity throughout the hallways. And then you can see that classroom addition off of the library that will add that additional space for 300 additional students. And then here's kind of a zoom in on those different areas on the main floor of the activity center, and then also the different levels, which show additional classroom space where that addition will be off of the library. And here are a couple of views from the main building entrance into the site, and then also a view of the new activity center and the skyway, and then a view of the classroom additions from the backside if you're looking towards the library and the new classroom addition. Then a couple more renderings showing the entrance of the activity center, and then also that view from 142nd Street when you're coming in off of Highway 3. And there's one recommendation in front of the commission today, so there is a motion to approve the site plan and building design to allow Independent School District 196 to renovate and expand the existing Rosemont High School, subject to conditions 1 through 5. I am here to answer any questions that the commission may have, but I do know that there are representatives with the school district and then also the school district's consultant as well.
Thank you, Julia. Are there any comments or questions for staff at this time?
I guess a couple.
Yeah.
The parking, I was a little surprised when I read that parking exceeds the standard because it's already very tight there, and they do like a raffle and stuff for parking spots. So I'm glad they're adding parking. I'm curious if there's an expectation of an increase in the student body size more than would accommodate for 60 people, because I think then the problem might be growing, actually.
Yeah, I would recommend asking that of the school district. They might have additional context to that, but I know with staff having conversations with the school district, they did see that this 60-stall addition would help with that, and they're not seeing parking being so much of an issue for the site with what they currently have on there. But again, I would recommend speaking with the applicant on that for additional context.
Okay. The other question I had is, I know the roundabout and the design is not in the plan here, but thinking about this development and what I see currently, there are some warnings, like the drop-off, cars are backed up all the way down, I think it's 142nd is the entry drive, and out onto 3. And so I'm curious if we know when that traffic circle's built, if they're going to do something to buffer, kind of set aside the traffic if it does back up coming in that drive, or if that problem should be addressed here too when they're doing the development.
I do know MINDOT is actively working with the city on transportation needs. I know that the school district, as well as the city and MINDOT, are actively having these conversations to mitigate transportation issues like that, such as traffic. Though that's not part of this request right now, those conversations are ongoing, and the city is actively working with the applicant and MINDOT to, you know, alleviate that issue with traffic on Highway 3.
Okay. I can do a follow-up with the applicant, because I'm curious if they, I understand that, and that would address it, but I'm curious if that is also going to solve for the traffic backup, or if the traffic backup should be resolved with something here, because it's a drop-off lane issue really, backs up all the way.
Yeah. And I do know back when the school district came forward to the city back in 2017, when they did make adjustments to, you know, their drop-off and pickup and also parking lot issues with the school buses, that they were trying to alleviate some of that traffic congestion that was on 3. So now bus traffic is more veered towards Chili Avenue instead of Highway 3. So they did try to adjust some of those traffic concerns back when they were doing those changes to the school back in 2017. And I know that with this roundabout, they're trying to also mitigate some of that existing traffic concerns as well, so.
The timing for the traffic circle, is that going to coincide with this, or how is that, do we know yet?
I know that the school district is working with MINDOT to do their phasing plan cohesively with that. Again, the school district will have a little more context to that, but for instance, in front of you, they do have that phasing plan where they have plans to do some of the work along with the roundabout construction with that, so.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. Did you say, excuse me, it's one vehicle to 20 students? Is that the, how did someone come up with that? That seems so low.
That was included in our new code. Our old code had different requirements, which included additional parking with the stadium and such like that. But when we were working on updating our code, we were going off of what other cities and other, you know, counties and such were doing for schools for parking, and that's just kind of how that came to be with the new requirement for off-street parking for secondary schools.
Because I'm just kind of in my head doing some math here with 2,100 students. Let's say half those students are of drivable age, 16 on up, so that's 1,000, let's just say. And 1,000 divided by 20 is 50. 50 cars for the high school kids seems very low. So I was just trying to figure out how they came up with that.
And that was just part of our updating of our new code. That was what they saw fit, at least with the city and also the consultant with updating.
Because if I know teenagers, I mean, as soon as they're 16, they want to be able to drive. I was just, maybe times have changed and nobody drives, but just trying to figure that out.
Do you know how this would have, if you would have looked at the old code, like would it have cleared?
Yeah, so also included in your agenda packet, there was a memorandum that was drafted by the applicant's consultant that kind of showed what the old city code had compared to what the new city code had, and the parking calculations, what's present on-site still exceeded that minimum requirement. So even if we did follow the old code for off-street parking.
It would have been.
It would have met, yes.
The old, I pulled that up, actually, because I was going to point that out. The old code required 861 stalls, and there's 984. So, yeah, we were still, they were still over what the old code had as well. And I think, I mean, I do agree, there's a lot of kids that want to drive, and I know that they have permits, parking permits, and you have to buy them, and it's a raffle, and I think like, there's a balance, right? You can't build parking so that every student that may want to drive has a parking spot. I mean, you know.
Oh, I understand. It just seems low for an entire high school.
Yeah. I think the, you know, with having, obviously, the parking that's used during the day during school isn't used at the same time for the stadium a lot. Sometimes there might be conflicting things, but in the auditorium and such, so hopefully they can kind of cross-share that parking.
I think my question more was just how do they come up with one per 20 students?
Yeah.
And that was just more of how our consultants saw that across the board with different cities and such for at least off-street parking requirements, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, Madam Chair, that's just kind of taking a look at what other cities have for their standards for high schools, and then applying that to Rosemont. I mean, there isn't a magic number. It's kind of a best practice sort of situation, but the city is aware that parking is tight over there. Our own community center has student parking occurring on that, often also in places that they're not allowed to. And then the police department is aware of parking happening in the neighborhoods as well, on the public streets. So I don't know, you know, there isn't a really good solution to that, but this is a suburban community, and parking is always something that we have to think about.
And with the addition of 60 new parking stalls, hopefully that will help.
I think a better part to the conversation would be what the school district is seeing as far as the student body population, and if there's an expectation for an increase, or if this is simply just allowing for more space for the students that are there with those classroom expansions.
Any other questions or comments for staff?
Yeah, one question, kind of a follow-up from Commissioner Reed's question is, and maybe this is best geared for representatives from the school district, but I don't know if that, the fieldhouse entrance is going to be an access point for students, because if people were to slow down and drop off their students, it could only, it could push back the people slowing down, and then the backup onto Robert Trail is my concern if the fieldhouse is accessible in the morning and people are slowing down there and then backing up traffic even further.
But I think if I'm looking at that map right, I'll come back to the other one.
Yeah.
They would have to come in and go down that road and into that parking lot to drop off.
Yeah, it's a driveway extension off of that.
But I'm saying people could, would just slow down, stop on the road, let their students out, and then it bottlenecks everybody else behind them because they see an access point.
I mean, I understand where you're, I come from on that, but I mean, there is a driveway extension off of that. The main entrance to the school still extends off of 142nd. I'd maybe touch base with the school district regarding that as well.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bugai, I think certainly that would be a great question for the school district to provide some feedback on and talk about their onsite operations and traffic management.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you, Julia. This item is a public hearing item this evening, so at this time, we will invite anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item up to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. And we did have a couple of questions and comments for the school district. If they want to kick us off tonight, we would invite them forward.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having us. My name is Pete Roback. I'm the principal at Rosemont High School, and appreciate all of these questions and something that we've given a lot of thought to as well. And it's amazing how this conversation is all about parking, which is really, really important. And of course, the major thing we try to do at Rosemont High School is have students learn and grow and teach our appropriate curriculum every single day.
Mr. Roback, can I get you to state your address for the record quick?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
12820 Biscayne Avenue West.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so, but we know that there's a lot of energy that goes into parking, and I should probably start by saying, first and foremost, rather than an obligation to fulfill a parking stall for every one of our student drivers, we want to provide a safe and orderly experience for our teenage drivers. That is the most important thing. And so we consider it our responsibility to make sure that we're successfully parking 16- and 17- and 18-year-old drivers, not only on our campus, but as they leave our campus, either out Chili or out onto Highway 3. And with the addition of the roundabout, we feel although it might not improve the flow of traffic, right now, our biggest concern is making sure that students have a safe intersection, and we feel good that roundabout will achieve that. So that's where we come at it from a school district. I should also mention that it wasn't that long ago, actually pre-COVID, where our enrollment was near 2,500 students, and we were successfully parking students with an enrollment of close to 2,500 students. District 196 instituted some attendance boundary changes three years ago. That brought our enrollment down dramatically. So we're down about 350 students from that high of nearly 2,500 students. And so, believe it or not, actually, parking students now has become easier for us. But I will certainly mention that there are more student drivers. And although we do provide public transportation, we still think a bus is a great option for students. We know that there are needs for families and students that have co-curricular activities. But we are able to successfully park all seniors. We're able to do that every trimester, most if not every junior, and where our lottery usually extends into are new 10th grade drivers. And we have instituted a lottery system for 10th grade drivers. So we feel pretty good with that kind of hierarchy of how our parking works, and we certainly have enough stalls for our staff, which is important as well. So with that said, I'm happy to entertain any other questions.
Can you, there was the comment, I know you mentioned that the roundabout is for, you know, is going to address some safety concerns, but the flow, so there's some concern about the flow, not necessarily directly related to this project, obviously, but just some concerns about the flow onto Highway 3. Has there been discussions or anything on how to alleviate some of that?
Yeah, no, it's a great question, and we've expressed those concerns with MINDOT as well, who we're working closely with. And that will, I think we're going to learn a lot through the roundabout project, but it's something we stress quite a bit. I should mention, someone had a question about maybe a backup coming down the hill on 142nd if students were exiting cars on the sidewalk to enter the new activity center. Due to safety and security reasons, we only have one door open in the morning, and that's our main entrance, so we can have eyes on all students as they enter Rosemont High School in the morning, and that will not change. So it would not benefit drivers or students to exit cars on 142nd because it'll be a long walk to the main entrance, and that's not real inviting in January and February.
Just to kind of follow up on that if I could.
Yeah.
So you can probably envision what I'm thinking of, right? So you're coming in in the mornings and traffic does get backed up, right? And it's probably because it's bottleneck on 142nd, the drive that's coming in. And so if that were to be widened, and then cars could go into the parking lot, so we'll have two lanes, right? Cars could go smoothly into the parking lot, and then the cars that are dropping off wouldn't get backed up with that. Has that been a consideration, or should that be a consideration in the design here?
Yeah, it certainly has. I'm not a traffic design expert by any stretch, but I have seen different models. Right now, I don't think we're different than most other suburban high schools. I think any school at the size of ours is going to have traffic congestion both at 7:30 in the morning and 2:30 in the afternoon. So I don't think we're any different than any other school. I think you still should look at options, as you said, to see how that might improve traffic flow. But I know compared to even to other high schools in our district, we're relatively just normal with how things work in the morning and the afternoon. And certainly a lot of high schools that are in a worse situation than we are, but something that's always on our radar. But we'll always start from a safety and security perspective first and foremost for our teenagers.
Thanks.
What is the targeted timeline for completion of this expansion?
So hopefully be doing some preliminary work, and you'll start to see, or notice some construction traffic and some trucks entering our campus the end of May or beginning of June, and all said and done, two and a half to three years before all things are said and done.
Yeah. So the roundabout would be fully in place before then?
Yeah, I should mention, roundabout is scheduled to start June 9th, so after our last day of school. And we are crossing our fingers and working with MINDOT that that roundabout will be constructed and completed by the first day of school in September.
Can you tell me, maybe just from a design standpoint, why you guys decided on like a standalone with a skyway versus maybe just an expansion of the existing building?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's one of the first questions I had. As principal, I was really hoping just from student kind of traffic from one area of the building to the other, and not to mention, we only have five minutes passing time, and students need to hurry to get from class to class, and that can be a pretty long walk. And so ideally, I went into this thinking that maybe that would be adjoined. But we ran into, and certainly my counterparts from WOLD can answer this better than I can, some under, kind of under-the-surface issues that just could not be avoided, with some mains that are running through there that we were not able to excavate down, so we ended up having to go up and over that service road.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Yeah.
We may have some after the rest of the public comment as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening?
How you doing?
Good evening.
I'm Todd Franz, and I own Self-Metrotor Brokers, and I've owned it for 36 years, and I've operated it for 36 years. First of all, I'm getting a lot more traffic now.
Sir, can you state your address for the record as well?
13942 South Robert Trail.
Thank you.
There, the traffic coming out of the community center, it seems like it's students, but I'm not sure exactly, but it's gotten super intense over the last couple of years. And now you can expect to wait at my driveway to get onto Highway 3. I've already seen several accidents in front of the school just in the last year, and I guess I'm curious, I didn't get any notification about a roundabout, so I don't know anything about that. But I know that I was talking about selling my car lot to an apartment developer last year, and I've had several other people that are talking to me right now. And I just wonder, it just seems like there's a lot of traffic in that spot, and I'm wondering if there's a bigger thought here as to, I don't know, it just seems to me that you're going to be increasing more traffic and more traffic on Highway 3. But that would be my concern.
Okay.
Because right now, if you come onto my car lot, you'll see that there's traffic like crazy at just about any time of the day, but for sure at 2:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will take all the public comments, and then after the public hearing, we'll have staff address comments and questions as we can.
Hi, my name is Nicole Benson, 14038 Burgundy Avenue. And I'm the president of the Glen Rose condominiums right across the street. So my concern, I'm also with the traffic. My son actually goes to Rosemont High School, too, so I am a parent of a student. I am very concerned about having another 60 parking spots at the school, because to his point, like from about seven in the Because to his point, like from about 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the morning, it's hard to even take a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn, especially with a lot of students parking at the community center too. Because that whole left-hand lane for all the, the users or the 10th graders going into that parking lot is still, is backed up too. So I'm trying to understand how with a roundabout, you're going to have people pulling into that, take a left-hand turn into community center also, and how that's going to like back up into the roundabout, which is going to make it even more difficult for any of us to ever take a left-hand turn, right? We always have to take a right-hand turn. So that's my biggest concern is adding more, 60 more cars in there compared to what it already is and knowing what that backup is like every single day. And even in the afternoons, starting about 2 o'clock or 2:30 maybe till about 3:15, you basically can't get out of your parking lot going left or right when we come out of the driveway. So I'm right on 140th.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Tousnade. I live at 3581 143rd Street West. So I've lived there for 28 years. I've had four children go to Rosemont High School. And my youngest, David. Hi, Mr. Robach, how are you? By the way, the bushes along the boulevard on 142nd, they need a little work. Okay. Walk my dog in the neighborhood and have for most of that time, two dogs. It's okay. Here's my concern. The timeline that you're all giving with the construction starting May-June this year, where is that construction crew going to park? And also, how are they getting to the site? Because Chili Avenue is bad right now. So I've lived there long enough that we did have kids, students, sorry, parking on our street for many years. And it didn't really bother me until it got bad. The kids were like leaving trash on our lawns and parking on the grass and that kind of thing. And a few of the neighbors complained, and so they took the parking away in the, in the residential area. It's just the fact that they're so, it, it's not just the kids, it's not just the parents, and it's not just the staff. Everybody's in a hurry to get to school and to get wherever it is that they want to go at between 7:00 and 8:00. And noonish too, the lunch crowd is a real angry bunch. And then after school, they're all in a hurry. They don't stop at stop signs, they speed through our neighborhoods to try to beat the stop sign on Chili. I've asked for traffic, you know, monitors to be installed and that kind of thing, and I haven't gotten much help from the city. So I apologize if I seem a little miffed. But my thing is, is that if it's going to continue and it's going to grow, that's awesome. But I also would like to have some consideration for the neighborhood that has to live next to the high school. And we have asked for the traffic to be monitored. And I've noticed that there's been some traffic monitors installed on our residential streets. And I want to know, is that for speeding? Is it for parking? What are you guys looking for? And number two, are you considering opening up the neighborhood again for parking? Because if you are, you might have a hard sell on that one. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. I'm Cindy Gibson. I live at 3520 143rd Street West in Rosemont, Kathy's neighbor. And I've lived there for the 30 years and I've had two kids go through the Rosemont schools as well, elementary, middle, and high school. And I loved Rosemont High School. I love, that's are very good. And I'm excited to see the expansion, but I have the same concerns with, as Kathy. As you come down Chili into the high school and pass through, there's one stop sign going down the hill, virtually 90% of the traffic never stops during these times of coming and going in the morning. They might roll through, but they never stop. The other thing is the backup from the intersection of Chili in 143rd Street during the schooltime entrances can be passed 145th all the way down towards County Road 42. So the backup is real on Chili as well as on, I'm sure, on Highway 3. I don't see that from, of course, my house, but the backup down Chili during the times of coming and going from the high school as well. So my concern is, especially if the roundabout doesn't get finished on time, you know that traffic's getting diverted over to Chili to come in until the roundabout would be done. So let's hope it's done before school starts, otherwise everything will be coming down Chili. And that will be a total nightmare. And as far as parking on the residential streets, again, I experienced the same thing. I didn't mind the extra parking of the kids and then walking down to the high school, and, and I was not one of the neighbors that complained. I didn't seem to care, it didn't bother me, other than, eh, there was a few of them that likes to go a little bit over the speed limit down the residential areas. So my concern is the traffic backup on that street as well as Highway 3. So there is considerations on both sides, on the east and the west, west end. So those are my concerns with that. And I'm excited for the expansion of the high school, that's great. I love it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening? I think we did have a couple of questions that would be directed towards the school district, so I don't know, Principal Robach, if you want to come up and answer them, or another representative. But one question I had is, the 60 stalls that you're adding for the activity center, will those be used for student parking during the day? Is that a plan to, to make those available for students? And then also, where are the construction crews are going to park and what the site access is that they're going to use?
Yeah, great questions, and I'd be happy to answer those. So a bit of this depends on the timing of the roundabout, and certainly hoping that that will be done by the first day of school. That is the plan, that's what MINDOT has assured us. And so the timing of this will be, the staging of the, the trucks will then be using the, the new roundabout, and will stage in our, where the activity center, basically where the parking lot will go. That, that will be the staging of all of the heavy equipment trucks, and the traffic will be done or will be accomplished through the new roundabout, hopefully avoiding Chili Avenue is, is the plan. And because the, the first, when the project starts, the end of May or beginning of June, that is just surveying work, putting up your construction fences. And so a lot of that heavy construction stuff won't happen until after the roundabout is completed.
Okay, okay. And then the, the new 60 stalls at the activity center, will those be used for student parking?
Yeah, we're still trying to identify exactly how to use those 60 spaces. It would seem like an easy thing to do, is just provide more student parking. But we know that those spaces will just be used during the school day. You know, there's a really different function with how our parking lot is used from 7:30 to 2:20, and then how it's used in the evening and on weekends. And so we see really more of that parking lot being used when there's heavy activity center use, which is not during the school day.
Right.
And so we're trying to decide what to do with those 60 spaces and figure out how it will have the least amount of impact with incoming traffic in the morning and outgoing traffic in the afternoon.
Right, because obviously, if we already have traffic concerns and backups, adding 60 more cars is...
Yeah. And so part of it will be learning how the roundabout, the impact that it has on flow. And so rather than us just deciding that we know exactly what we're going to do with those 60 spaces, I think there's going to be a period of learning too. And there may have to be some shifting in how we, we use that space.
Okay. And based on the, the timeline, you'll have a good year of the roundabout before those parking are available anyways.
Yeah, a year, if not two years before we'd even have access to them. It's a good point.
Okay. Thank you. Were there any other questions that commissioners had for the applicant?
I just had one more. So like, I guess looking holistically between the high school, elementary school, and then, you know, the former middle school, like, has there been consideration about potentially adding like a third access point road in or out of the high school? I'm not sure what the plans are for the middle school at this point, but...
Yeah, no, there has not been discussion, more so from an engineering perspective and cost perspective. I think we've heard all sorts of ideas on how to increase parking spaces as well, and everything from parking ramps to, to, to you name it. But there is an option of, once it's decided from a school district perspective, what will happen with the old Rosemont Middle School? I know there's been some conversation about potentially extra parking available at that location as well, but that's yet to be determined on how that space is going to be used. And I do really appreciate the community members' kind of feelings about on-street parking and just, you know, from a school district perspective, we hope we do not return to on-street parking as well.
Thank you.
I had a question, and I'm not sure if this is for yourself or our staff, but when they install a roundabout, typically the road closes. Is that correct? So when that road closes, school activities still happen, things still happen all during summer. I need to go up to get to point A to B myself as a resident, whether school affiliated or not. If the, if that intersection closes and the school activities still pertain, then, then yeah, I do see where the residents are going to see that traffic come up Chili or wherever. So can anybody tell me if the roundabout intersection is going to be closed during that time? Because they usually close the, the road.
It, it is. And it's specifically designed in the summer, when we don't have that rush of 2,400 people, 2,500 people entering and...
I'm just wondering where that diversion or where that detour route might be.
So volume will be a lot less, but during those months of June, July, and, and into August, we'll have to reroute traffic or MINDOT the city of Rosemont through Chili Avenue. That'll be the one entrance that will be open to Rosemont High School.
Okay.
And so there'll be trucks like precast concrete and stuff that will have to go through Chili Avenue?
No, I commented on that earlier. Again, some of the pre-work that's going to be done up until the time the roundabout is done will not involve large construction trucks and a lot of dirt, you know, moving. Once the roundabout is done, the heavy trucks will come in, they'll be able to use the new roundabout, not Chili Avenue.
So it was grading, or surveying and fencing and things like that?
Yeah, kind of prepping for construction during the, this upcoming summer.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I will do a last call for anyone that wants to make comments on this item. Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, public hearing is now closed. So Julia, I don't know, it, between you and, and the other city staff, this item before us this evening is, well, there's an impact with the 60 additional parking slots that could potentially increase some traffic and more cars to the site during the day. Other than that, it's, it's more about their expansion plans. But we heard a lot of concerns this evening about traffic and the backups and speed limits and things on the residential streets. What are some, like, is there thoughts, is there conversations that staff has had on any of that? And where we, what we can provide residents for some direction on those?
Madam Chair, we can offer maybe a couple of points on that. So you're correct in what you're taking a look at here is the site plan for the school expansion. And what we heard, a lot of the comments on tonight are existing operations, traffic, circulation, traffic management, how that would be adapted or changed with, with, during the expansion with the roundabout. There's obviously a lot of moving parts going on, on here. And of, of course, it's not a simple, let's just construct it in a, in a vacuum and, you know, there's, there's a lot of pieces that, that have to, to take place there. So over the years, there's been a lot of discussion about where students park, whether it's at the RCC through a permitting system with, in partnership with the city, on-street off of Chili, removing those ability to park on the on-street. And I know Principal had kind of addressed that as well as some of the, the residents there. As well as internal to the city, we do have our own safety committee, which does take a look at ongoing issues throughout the community in conjunction with our police department, Public Works. There's always constant dialogue between the city and the school in terms of what's, what's working and things that can be, can be tweaked. Also recognizing that South Robert Trail is state highway and it's a MINDOT project, while the city has some influence on that in terms of staging, ultimately, operations and management of that roadway is, is through the state. But we have a partnership with them, but we don't necessarily control what takes place there, other than helping to manage some of that construction staging, which I think we, we talked about in detail tonight. So maybe those are a couple of things I could offer up at, at this point, but just ongoing monitoring between our police and public safety officials, ongoing communications with the, the school as well as the school district, future plans with the existing Rosemont Middle as the new Rosemont Middle is being constructed. There's certainly opportunities for evaluation, re-evaluation as this project evolves.
Thank you. It would be interesting, and of course, I don't, I don't want any children, any children, any, any kid drivers, you know, to get stopped, you know, on the, on the roads for not stopping at a stop sign, you know, and get a ticket, just, I don't want to just start, start that, but you know, maybe there's some patrol that's out there and maybe some communication to the student drivers that they are going to start patrolling it. And, you know, I, I shouldn't say that I don't want them to get a ticket, I would like to give them a heads up that, hey, you might have been, you might have been sailing through this stop sign before, but we're going to start patrolling that, you know, you need to start stopping, watching tra, watching speed limits, things like that, like some, some pre-warnings. I don't know if the, if there's anything that could be done there with the police department to kind of do some monitoring of that and, and help. It sounds like that would be good. And then, you know, I don't know that you'll know this, but there was the comment about monitors that were installed. Do you know what those are looking for? There was a question on what those are looking for.
I don't specifically know what those specific monitors that the resident was referencing would be for.
Okay. Is there someone that they can follow up with the city to understand more about them? Is that Public Works?
Yep, they could certainly call our Public Works or Police Department. In between the, the two, they would be able to answer it.
Okay. Okay, so maybe following up with the Public Works or the Police Department on the monitors would be an option to understand what they're there for? Any other comments or questions that others have?
I'll just say, I mean, I, I'm really excited about the plan. I mean, it's probably overdue, and it's, I like the way the building's designed, it looks nice. I am concerned about not taking this opportunity to maybe address the bottleneck. See, I know it's usually just in the mornings coming in, but if we're putting a roundabout there, I'm concerned about that. So I, I think it's not going to prevent me from approving this, recommend me approve it, but I do think it's something that we'll have to keep an eye on because it's probably a going concern.
I do want to jump back to Adam. There was some comments more from the, the traffic on Highway 3 from residents and, and the auto broker owner in terms of traffic flow and safety and who, if they have questions on the roundabout, it sounds, you know, the roundabout's been in the works for a long time, but because it's a state project, it's, the communication's a little bit different on that, who can they reach out to to understand what that flow is going to look like for them during construction and such?
I know MINDOT has a project website, and I, I don't, I'm, I'm not saying just, just go to the state website, it's not our problem, because that's, that's not the case necessarily either. I mean, we're always happy to have conversations with any resident or business owner that's concerned or just wants more information or a better understanding from a technical perspective of what that's looking like on there. So I, I would start with seeing if, if there's information available on the MINDOT project website for Highway 3. Our Public Works and engineering staff are always available for taking calls or emails or questions on that, and they can certainly have any conversations on a one-on-one basis.
Okay, so it would be the Public Works Department to follow up with, with questions or in regards to that project and the traffic as well, other than also the state website? Okay, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners?
Overall, I'm glad to see us investing in schools, and I know having a great school makes Rosemont attractive for new, new people coming here. And so I'm, I'm glad to see this project in investment. I just happened to be looking at the, the project website on the MINDOT site, and that roundabout, they're planning on that taking May through September to construct, three months, June through September? So how does that affect summer construction when the trucks are coming, supposed to be coming in?
Summer construction for?
For the fieldhouse.
So what I heard Principal Robek state was that this summer, they are doing prep work, fencing, surveying, and those things, and the trucks would not be coming in until after the roundabout's done in the fall.
And, okay. And what I heard, what I heard was that it was coming in. Okay. All right. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. So I think the project is going to take two and a half to three years to complete the expansion pieces. So it will be, you know, the expansion won't be done just this summer.
Understood.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion if everybody's ready.
I just want to, real quick, before you do that, I am also excited about this project. I do want to just thank the residents and the business owners that came tonight to speak about traffic. We hear your concerns. This area has always been, you know, a challenging one with the traffic and the congestion. And so city staff has been working with the state and with the school district to continue to improve and alleviate that. Please do keep communication, work, you know, call the Public Works Department, share that. I have not heard any discussion on opening up off-street parking again. So that has not been a discussion. But please continue to do that. This project is more about the expansion tonight, but we do hear your concerns on the traffic and the congestion. And so please, as you see stuff, continue to communicate with them, the Public Works Department, the Police Department as well. Okay. Go ahead.
Motion to approve the site plan and building design to allow independent school district 196 to renovate and expand the existing Rosemont High School, subject to conditions one through five.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bednar, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Our decision on this item this evening is a final decision. It will not go forward to City Council unless our decision this evening is appealed. Anyone that wishes to appeal our decision this evening can do so by reaching out to city staff within 10 days of tonight. With that, we will move on to our second public hearing item this evening. A request by Kamal Omer and APRO Development for approval of a site plan review and conditional use permit. And I will turn it over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is related to a property in the southern portion of the city on 158th Circle West, which is in the Biscayne Business Park. Site itself is designated for business park development in the city's comprehensive land use plan and zone B2 planned unit development or employment planned unit development. As I said, it is part of the Biscayne Business Park that was approved in 2019. The subject property is comprised of three parcels, 1510, 2510, 2520, and 2530, 158th Circle West. The applicant is proposing a major automotive repair shop with office space. That use is a conditional use in the B2 employment zoning district. The definition in the code is before you on the screen there. Essentially, it is for the heavier type of repairs to vehicles, engine out type things, radiators, transmissions, as opposed to minor automotive repair, which the code defines as for vehicles under 7,000 pounds and limited to services like tune-ups, lube, oil changes, tires, et cetera. Staff finds that the plan generally meets the requirements of the city code. And one thing to note, and I will call it out a couple of times in this presentation, that because the applicant is going to be using three parcels, the way the site was configured with their stormwater ponds, they are proposing to reconstruct the stormwater ponds into a shape that is more conducive for development. The site itself, as I said, is in the southern portion of the city, near the intersection of Biscayne Avenue and County Road 46. For a little context, immediately east of the site is Dakota Aggregates Mining Operation. South is different industrial or light industrial businesses like Dakota Unlimited Fencing, Franna's Wall Plant is within the vicinity, as well as You Pull Our Parts and AAA Auto. Further west of the site is Highway Three, where you can see the Home Depot facility in the Rosemont Business Park area. Zooming in a little bit more, you can see the site in a little better context there. As I said, this is part of the Biscayne Business Park, which was platted with eight parcels originally. Here's the existing survey showing the topography of the site. I'm mainly showing this to provide you a little bit of context for the existing ponding. As you can see, there's two ponds on-site as well as a third over here on the west. These project into the main area of the subject property and, like I said, are not so conducive for development of the site. There's also some perimeter easements between the existing parcels that would need to be vacated as part of the development. Staff has prepared conditions to be applied to the commission's recommendation this evening. The applicant has provided a site plan that, as I said, meets the standards for the zoning ordinance. The general layout shows the proposed building, which would be an office area on the eastern side of the building. And on the western side of the building, it would be the service bays for the repair shop. The applicant's business would be repairing semi-trucks and tractor trailers in larger service bays. This would not be for passenger vehicles. As you can see, the parking lot here allows for those trucks to be parked. There's a more traditional parking area on the eastern side here that would be for employees and visitors to the site. So here's a table showing the zoning standards for the site. It does meet all the site setback requirements. It's also below the maximum lot coverage, and it is a, the building is above the minimum 10% for the B2 and I1 zoning districts. The parking provided by the site plan exceeds that required by the code. A total of 79 spaces are required. The plan shows 102 total. That's broken down by three different types. Passenger automobile, 42 spaces. Tractor or bobtail at eight spaces. And then semi-trucks, which would be the truck and trailer combos, 52 spaces. So just to allow a little bit more recollection here on how that site is laid out and where those parking is provided. Also note that site access will be gained from two points. There's an existing shared driveway on the east. This will be the main entrance for passenger vehicles and employees. There's a wider driveway up here, although still within the maximum driveway width of the zoning ordinance. This will be where the trucks enter, and the wider configuration allows for better maneuvering. Site plan also includes a site or trash enclosure location in this area, which is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. Although the applicant did not provide elevations showing the actual plans for that trash enclosure, that is included as a condition of approval that those be submitted prior to a building permit. The applicant provided a landscape plan showing it meets the city code requirements for trees and foundation plantings. 75 trees are required. That is based off of a minimum of one tree per 3,000 square feet of site area. And then foundation plantings are one shrub per 10 linear feet of building perimeter. The trees are planted on the southern property line as well as the northern property lines up here. There's some trees planted in the parking lot, as well as shrubbery within that parking lot area throughout. Some additional foundation plantings on the eastern frontage of the building, and then along the north side and in the northwest corner. There are approximately 6,500 square feet of landscaped area in and around the parking lots. That is above the minimum 5% provided or required by the zoning code. The applicant did provide color elevations that show the buildings will be in conformance with the standards for building materials and massing. The buildings are 24 feet in height, well below the 50-foot maximum of the B2 zoning district. Also note that the materials will be precast concrete panels with two different colors. The vertical elements would be breaking the building up into segments of 28 feet, which is better than the 35-foot minimum that the zoning code requires for buildings in the B2 district. Some awnings are shown over the entrances and some windows in the office areas of the building. The applicant provided a site lighting plan as well. There will be pole-mounted lights at 25 feet and wall-mounted lights at 19 feet. The maximum height is 30, so they're within that maximum. And then, not shown here, but included with the commission's packet is a photometric study that shows that the lights will be below the maximum one lumen at the property boundaries. So in addition to the site plan review being requested, as I said, major automotive repair is a conditional use in the B2 zoning district. All conditional uses must meet seven general conditions, which are listed before you here in the packet. In the staff report, there are findings for each of these conditions, but they're generally to ensure that there are no negative impacts on adjacent properties for some of these reasons listed here before you, and that the use is harmonious with the provisions of the city code. But in addition to these seven standards, there's 12 that must be met by major automotive repair businesses. Again, those were listed in their entirety, as well as staff's findings for each condition. But I did want to call out three of them that would be most relevant to the use as it is being proposed, namely that all of the repair work must occur within the building. The site plan does show that those service bays would accommodate the vehicles, and that's where the repair would occur. Outdoor storage of parts, while allowed in the B2 district and must conform to those standards, are not being proposed with this site plan review or conditional use permit. And then also that junk or unlicensed vehicles, so these are really wrecked cars that are not roadworthy, those have to be stored inside. This is something that can't be really shown on the site plan, but one thing about conditional use permits is that if it is found by the city that conditions are not being met, that conditional use permit can be revoked. Obviously, that's not going to be the very first step for us, but it does allow the city some enforcement ability with regards to a conditional use permit. So as I said, the remaining conditions that are specific to this use have been listed in the staff report with staff's findings for each of those. As I said, there are a couple of issues that do need to be addressed. The trash enclosure final plans must be submitted. Also, the single, the three parcels must be combined into a single one. That's something that, because it's all part of the same plat, the county will do without city action required. But the vacation of the existing perimeter and ponding easements must occur prior to development of the site, before we can issue any building permits. And vacation of easements occurs at the city council with a public hearing. So that's something that will be taking place as this continues to move forward through the approval process. And then any new easements would be, have to be dedicated, although looking at the existing easements, it simply could be just a vacation of a lot of the excess easement and leaving only that, which would encompass the new ponding on-site. There was an engineer's memo that was attached as well with some comments. That is something that would have to be, conformance with those requirements would be required also as a condition of approval. I do apologize to the commission. I did not have a slide with the recommended actions and the recommended conditions. So I do hope you have the staff report before you, but there are two actions staff is recommending. Motion to approve the site plan, subject to conditions, and then a motion to recommend the city council approve the conditional use permit, which would be at its April meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this project or defer to the applicant as well.
Thank you, Anthony. I appreciate the color rendering, so thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any comments or questions for city staff at this time?
So this would fully complete then the build-out of that whole street, right, 158th, in terms of?
So there would be still one, Madam Chair, Commissioner Bednar, there'd still be one parcel left.
One parcel remaining?
The commission did review KDP's proposal for some warehouse storage unit or warehouse office units on these three. So there would still be one remaining parcel.
And at this point, not seeing any need to, like, do anything about the intersection between that street and Biscayne, right? It just, traffic doesn't demand anything.
Yeah, yep. And also note that this is 158th Circle West is a private road that was constructed with the Biscayne Business Park. The two deviations from the code that were included with that planned unit development agreement related to having the buildings have access to a public road via a private road and then allow shared driveways as well. I know that wasn't your question, but there's a little bit more context on that.
Any other comments or questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you, Anthony. This item is a public hearing item, so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience would like to speak may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Jim Connolly with APRO Development, 21476 Granada Avenue, Lakeville, here with Nadia Ritter, designer with APRO, just here to answer any questions you might have as you consider our item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Seeing no other comments in the audience, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Bugai. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed.
I have a motion up.
You've got the motion up. You're ready to go. Okay. I am, this is, I think this is really exciting to kind of get that section, that area built out. This is an exciting addition to our city. So thank you for bringing it, and I personally look forward to having this a part of our city.
Good.
All right. Okay, Commissioner Rivera.
Here we go. Motion to approve the site plan for an automotive repair business at 2510, 2520, and 2530, 158th Circle West, subject to the following conditions, one through nine.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rivera, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Before Commissioner Rivera continues, that motion, Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong here, but that motion is a final decision tonight. It does not move forward to city council unless it is appealed within 10 days from this evening. The second motion this evening will move forward to city council, and I will turn it back to Commissioner Rivera.
Motion to recommend the city council approve a conditional use permit for an automotive repair major use at 2510, 2520, and 2530, 158th Circle West.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rivera, seconded by Commissioner Bednar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. That item, as well as, I believe, the easement component, will move forward to the April 15th city council meeting. Okay. That concludes our public hearing section this evening. Is there any new business?
There's not.
No, okay. Any discussion from staff?
No.
Okay. Real quick, just a couple of items. Our next meeting is April 22nd. It is, we're back to Fourth Tuesdays, April 22nd, May 27th, and June 24th. We are looking forward to having our newly appointed commissioners at our April 22nd meeting. As that process is still underway, we don't have decisions on that yet, so we will have new, we've got a couple of spots open for new commissioners. So we hope to have them joining us in April. I will be absent at the April meeting. Liz, Adam, I think you guys already have that down. If anyone else is going to be absent for any of the upcoming meetings, please let Liz and staff know right away. And then, real quick, before we adjourn, I just, we don't have Commissioner Whitman with us this evening. He has resigned from the commission following, in this last month. So I just want to thank him, even though he's not here, I want to thank him for his service and his time with our planning commission, and we wish him the best.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you. One note, we do have our Rosemont Business Expo coming up on April 5th. That's a Saturday.
Okay.
Sorry, so didn't mean to steal Kurt's thunder.
Nope. Good ad. So the Rosemont Business Expo, April 5th, and...
So the Rosemont Business Expo, April 5th, and that is at the high school this year?
The high school, yes.
Okay, so Rosemont High School, a new location, I believe. Yes. Okay. Anything else? Anyone have any other items?
Nope.
Okay. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.